Sorry about that.
Calling. Brattleboro Planning Commission to order at 6:02 PM on Monday, September 14th. Okey doke, let me just call up the agenda and if I make all sorts of errors you errors today, you're gonna have to excuse me. I have been on Zoom all day. Today's a teaching day. Oh, and you can't see me, can you? Sorry. I'll put my camera on. I I have learned from my students to tape over the video camera. Okay, so announcements.
All right, so I have two announcements. The first is that Josh resigned from the planning commission, so there is one open seat. So Doran, we encourage you to apply if you're interested in it. The process is that the select board actually has to announce openings before they before they appoint, but you could still get an application in now. I am not sure yet if they have announced an opening, but again, you could get an application in and just be in the queue for when they
I actually just submitted it before this because Andrew had sent it my way, so.
Oh, great. Good. Good. So we thank Josh for his service. Life has just gotten busy. And then my other announcement is, I think that most of you are aware of this, and thanks for Andrew, Prudence, and Felicity for being there. But and I think Doran, you were at that meeting too. But on September 1st, the select board passed the interim zoning bylaw. And yeah, it was a really good positive moment. There were some nice comments from select board members. There was a recognition that zoning is part of a structural system that has held people back and been used purposely hold people back. So it was a nice moment. And if you haven't caught any of the meeting, it might be worth pulling up that video and watching it. So it was well received. And so hopefully, we're gonna, you know, move the needle a little bit. Zoning is not going to solve the housing problem, but it's part of the solution. So I know Felicity or Prudence want to add anything, or Andrew?
I'll just add that Sue did a fantastic job presenting, comprehensive, and lots of really good information in a tight timeline. It was really well done.
Yeah, I totally agree. And there were, and it was unanimous. I mean, the select board were all, everyone who spoke, spoke positively and thanked the commission, and it was great.
So those are my
Felicity did a nice job, too, by the way. Excuse me.
That's nice.
Tom, did you have a question? Sorry.
Sorry, I didn't make it to that. I was busy with something. I forget what it was. But yeah, I think as you guys have gathered, I am into the zoning changes based off of what I've come to the commission before with with ideas. So I think we can come up with some great ideas, just, you know, of ourselves, staff and commissioners, and we don't necessarily need, you know, to do one year long consultant projects to get ideas that sometimes don't even go anywhere. So I think I think this was evidence that we can come up with some really good and effective ideas that get traction quickly and are made effective quickly. So good job, folks.
Off the record, you look a little bit like the god of Brattleboro there, Tom.
Good job, everyone. I'm proud of you. But I wanted to say one more thing, because a few meetings ago, I said, I made some comment on the those concrete barriers. I know that wasn't a planning commission or services thing, but we did chime in as far as the response to COVID and making sidewalks more accessible. And I just was kind of lamenting that I think like four or so were set up, and then they like two or three were just taken down, or they weren't used. But now I think as time has gone on, there's at least like three of them that, one, they look really good, and they're also being used, and they have chairs. So I think it just took some time to to work out the kinks and for people to figure out how to how to mature into them. So anyway, I think they look great, and it was a great, great thing that the town did.
I agree. And I would say that the planning commission did have a role in, you know, bringing that up and kind of advocating, even if it was just for me, at the department head level, in favor of the parklets. So and that was based on the discussions we had here. So thank you for that.
Prudence?
Just for the interim bylaw, are we gonna, is there gonna be any publicity, or do people need to be made aware, or like, are folks aware of that CARES funding to, you know, add add housing?
So a couple of things. There was a newspaper article, but you know, I can try to do a press release and get some more press about it. We're also working as a department to put out a newsletter that will probably come out quarterly to better communicate with the public. We'll start quarterly, and that is going to be a feature article that will talk about the different CARES programs for housing in that. So we're looking to launch that October 1st. But we can certainly do a press release beforehand.
Great. Um, I I think we probably should. I mean, I would like the minutes to reflect our profound gratitude to Josh for the work that he did during the time that he was a planning commissioner. I mean, he was a very active and engaged member of the commission, and he his his work will be and his perspective will be sorely missed. So I think it's important to have that noted.
You're here.
Will do.
Okay.
So that's my announcements. I don't know if any of you have announcements that you want to share.
Any announcements? Alrighty, public, are there any members of the public present? Who would like to speak?
Actually, that is only me. Yeah, I just want to say, I really, I really appreciated your proposal, the way you put through the proposal on that in the select board meeting, Sue and Felicity, you did a really good job, the way it was put through. And yeah, my my excitement in hopefully joining the planning commission, partially like was partially was the fire was put there by Josh, actually, who was a friend of mine, who suggested that, and Jess, who I think was the very first seed that that got me in here. And yeah, I'm very passionate about making sure Brattleboro remains a very equitable place for all to live, being born and raised in Dumerson, going to high school in Brattleboro, going away and then coming back. So this is very much my home. I'm very excited to hopefully be able to join you all on the committee. And I was spending a lot of time in the past so many months as through the the tenants union, reading up on state housing law, which is not exciting, but really important. So yeah, just I hope I'll be able to join you all and continue to do some good work, because it's important. So thank you.
Great. Thank you. Okey doke. Approval of the minutes. Do y'all get a chance to look at the minutes from August 12? Yes, I see nodding heads. Is there a motion to approve? Tom makes a motion to approve. Is there a second?
I do.
I'll second.
Kathy's seconding. Okay, is there a discussion? No, nobody has any additions, corrections, changes, comments? Alrighty, all those in favor of approving the minutes as submitted? Great, the minutes pass. Alrighty, hazard mitigation committee.
Yeah, this one, Felicity, this popped up without your knowledge, and I apologize.
That's all right.
So if you're okay, I'll just go ahead and speak with it.
Please, go right ahead. I couldn't even begin.
So Brattleboro has an all hazards mitigation plan that is a requirement of us being involved with the FEMA's community rating system, which by being a member of the community rating system, we get discounted, property owners in town who have flood insurance get discounts based on our rating. And we are one of the highest rated communities for a town the size of Brattleboro. I think we're at an eight right now. I think it it's at least 10% of a discount. Anyway, one of the requirements is to have a hazard mitigation plan. We've had one that was approved in 2016. It's expiring in 2021. And in the past, we've had a committee that's pretty much been made up of department heads and Brian Bannon, who's kind of our hazard mitigation planner. And this year, we're pretty much updating it. There's a lot of good, solid information in it. Some projects have been done, but it needs to be updated. And so we're going to kind of go through this review process and a public outreach process to kind of update the recommended projects in it. We're looking to, so we reformatted the hazard mitigation committee so that it's not just department head members. We wanted other stakeholders, including a select board member, a planning commissioner, two public, two members from the public. And so we're hoping that there might be somebody on this commission that is interested in serving on the hazard mitigation plan review committee. It's it's an appointment for one year. We're expecting to meet four times between now and December. The purpose of the steering committee is to give some feedback, maybe point us in areas that you know of that, you know, there might be some hazard. The hazard mitigation plan is something that we use if we're using FEMA funding, either for pre-disaster mitigation or post disaster. It's, you know, one of the, we have a really good plan, but one of the areas that we want to focus a bit more on is environmental justice and social justice. So and and a little bit and be more specific about climate change. It's all in there, but it's not as explicit as we'd like it to be. So these meetings will probably take place during the day. They will probably be about an hour and a half. They're going to be held on Zoom. Nothing's been scheduled yet, because we're trying to figure out who's on the committee. So I'm hoping it's of interest to to somebody, or Jess?
I have a question. Just could you share some of the examples of projects that have come up in the hazard mitigation plan?
Sure. So the land conservation at 250 Bird Street and the floodplain restoration there. I think the Tri Park, Tri Park and the removal of the homes from the floodplain, or the relocation of the homes out of the floodplain, the Melrose, I mean, I would say primarily are projects have been flood related. A couple of bridge projects. We'd like to be a little bit more proactive. We know that there are some undersized bridges. So like, if the town is going to be making improvements, I can think of one on Black Mountain Road that is undersized and often gets, you know, if it's heavy rains, it's gets close to being overtopped. But it could be wind damage, it could be drought, it could be, you know, ice jams is another one in there. So there's a couple of areas where we know we have ice jams. So those are mentioned. Just those kind of projects. It could be dam removal.
Yeah, you mentioned climate change and social justice. How do you see those relating, I mean, climate change more obviously, but how do you see those relating to?
Well, we know that a lot of times economically disadvantaged people are living in floodplains or and more susceptible to the flooding. So that's kind of the social environmental justice piece of it. And so we'd like to engage those, you know, people living in those areas more.
Will the sustainability coordinator be involved in this?
He will be.
Any volunteers?
Does it have to be someone from the planning commission?
Um, we do have two citizen committees, but so right now, we are looking for a planning commissioner. We had one citizen who's been appointed, and there's another opening. So and, you know, we're welcome to have more, I think, for the purposes of trying to get it, get it up and going and have a forum. We just had two citizen positions on the committee, but certainly there's more stakeholders and we'll be reaching out to them. So.
If someone else wants to do it, I would be glad for someone else to do it. If no one wants to, I'm also glad to do it. I feel like there's a lot that I would learn from the process that would serve me in a lot of ways. So but if someone else wants to, I will not stand in your way.
I I can't. I'm barely staying above water with the schoolwork for two remote kids.
I think this one might be all yours, Kathy.
Hi.
Thank you.
You were gonna be a stakeholder anyway, Kathy, so you know.
It's kind of what I was thinking, like, it almost might save me time.
Great, thank you. Municipal planning grant, housing needs assessment and plan. Is that you, Sue? Or is that Andrew?
I will be presenting this one.
Okey doke. Take it away.
As we, as we discussed in the past, we're going to be applying for the 2021 municipal planning grants. And the idea that myself and Sue have been working on is applying for a the grant would be used to hire consultants to basically conduct a process to make a housing need assessment plus a housing action plan. So we recently reached out to Cameon 310, which is a consulting service out of Saratoga Springs. However, one of their VPs lives in Brattleboro. Rachel, can't remember her last name, but she's been to some of our, yes, thank you. She's been to some of our events in the past with some outreach stuff, the downtown plan. So we connected with her and one of her associates and had a quick meeting just to give them a rundown of what we're looking for. And kind of what we told them is that we're looking to create a comprehensive housing plan that addresses the town's needs for housing, identifies barriers, opportunities, and develops strategies while maintaining an equity lens route. So they got back with a back to us with a brief scope of work. And so I'll just give you a rundown of kind of what they were thinking in terms of this plan. So just to start, to maintain that equity lens, they would sort basically demographic and industry data by racial and ethnic groups, interview those directly, working with populations that face specific and unique hardships, and develop strategic recommendations that will purposely and positively impact these communities. They will also recommend forming a steering committee to complete this plan with representation from those who can speak to the needs of disproportionately impacted communities. And then here's a quick rundown of the scope of work they proposed. So there'll be a project kickoff with the steering committee, which will be made up of people from outside organizations, the housing tenants union, for example, probably someone from the housing authority, staff, supply someone from the commission, or you all, et cetera, et cetera. And then there'll be the demographic and economic analysis, which will set the framework for the housing analysis portion. They'll develop demographic and socioeconomic profile for the region that will be used for reference for the study, and then basically be the baseline of information that will inform the housing analysis portion. So the housing needs analysis, they're going to collect and analyze data on existing housing supply, interview stakeholders to conduct a survey, and then the findings will be used to project demand for various housing types. After that, there's going to be the synthesis and strategies, which will include the recommendation section of the plan, an action map and draft report, the action man, the action map, excuse me, would be the implementation tool. And then there'll be a final report and presentation in terms of public outreach, what it will look like. They're going to have a community meeting, which will most likely be held online. There's going, they're going to create a community survey, which is basically will be used to find an understanding of the known and perceived housing and opportunities and challenges, as well as resources available in the area, the capacity of stakeholder organizations, employer workforce needs, and the overall strength and weakness of the town. There'll also be stakeholder interviews with like local real estate, such as housing experts, major employers, town departments. So that's kind of a quick rundown of what they gave us. And we're going to use this to help write the grant and apply for the MPG, which is due October 1. We've gone started already. So look for, look for an update from us, because next time we meet, we'll probably have submitted it by then. So that's kind of an update for myself. Does anyone have any questions?
Yeah. Can I just?
Great.
Can I?
Yeah, go ahead.
Something first? And this might help with your questions, or at least guide the conversation afterwards. We've not contracted with anybody. In terms of this grant program, we need to give a scope of work and prove that the amount that we're requesting for is reasonable. So if we were awarded the grant, we would need to go out, you know, with a request for proposals or a request for qualifications. The reason we wanted to walk through what the scope of work is, is to get a little feedback from you, because we, you know, if it's, if it's not what you're thinking of, or if you want to see something different, we'd like to hear that now so that we can go back to them and at least, you know, just kind of tweak what we need to tweak.
You guys still have questions? Go ahead, Jessica?
All right. Question number one is about the action plan, the implementation plan. Did they give any specifics about what that might look like or include, or as far as actual infrastructure building and funding to support that? Like, would that be included, or would it be primarily a zoning focused action plan?
It's gonna, I think it would be a various items, like regulatory change will be included. I think they have a list. Let me find that and let's see you have it up. But it's definitely gonna be more than zoning.
My other question was about the the steering committee that they're recommending getting together around this. Because the project, and especially some of the language that you just used in describing the project, centers around marginalized communities or communities that have difficulty accessing housing. I wonder about some of the recommendations that the committee that put together the proposal for the police review, if they might be incorporated, like offering compensation to steering committee members, or some sort of financial support to encourage their participation, and offering focus groups compensation as well?
Those are good questions. I would say I do think that some compensation is possibly available under the municipal planning grant, but it's gonna take away from some of the scope. So we can look at that. I'll make sure it's an eligible cost. But I don't have a very big department budget, and we are putting some money towards this. So I don't know at one point, will it not be feasible? In terms of the steering committee, you know, for sure, we're not decided, you know, at this point of who's on the steering committee. So I think that we would want to have it be a broad group, because we want the community buy-in. And because of kind of going to your first question, it is beyond zoning, for sure. And so we're going to need, you know, partners in the community to make it work. It's not even, you know, some of the solutions are not going to be under the municipal realm either. So, you know, we need them involved. So but yes, I mean, we can look at compensation. I'm not sure where they've landed for the police review as to what the amount is. I think there'll be some, maybe some information tomorrow night in the select boards discussion.
Kathy, did you have questions?
I was just curious about the you know, I'm thinking of like in migration from both climate change issues, and then because of coronavirus, and just curious if how the work would be structured would consider or think about, you know, the questions around how to attract people to Brattleboro, and then also who we are attracting, and how to be considerate of that. I'm not, I'm not, I realize, I feel like I'm not articulating this very well, you know, like, there could be lots of people moving here who are rich, who are moving into their second homes. And it may be that there's a way to balance how people migrate into Vermont in a way where you provide opportunities for people from all different, you know, economic, social stratas. And so you know, if you do a survey of the housing as it is now, and what people who already live here say they need, that may not actually reflect what we might need, given how people might migrate migrate into the state. So that that was my question. I don't know if it, I didn't kind of, when you described it, Andrew, I didn't hear that in it. And I don't know if that's just something that would, you know, be when you're actually putting the request for proposals out, like, if there's a way to clarify that, or, you know, I feel like we're at a tricky moment in time. And so just figuring out how we how we wind our way into the population that might be, might be coming into Vermont over the next decade.
Yeah, I think those were valid questions. I mean, the migration, I've been thinking about that myself, obviously with COVID related migration, but also the greater climate change. And obviously, we're seeing it before our eyes right now, you know, look at West Coast. I mean, it's only going to get worse unless, you know, things get, they, we get our head in the game, but that's not happening. But I think that's something that we could definitely for, I mean, Sue, what are your thoughts on including something like that in the grant?
Yeah, I don't think in the proposal that they sent us, it's explicitly addressed. There's two parts to the needs. So there's housing needs, and then there's the housing demand. So basically, they're going to look at what the needs are, then they're going to look at what's here, and then they are kind of looking out over 20 years to figure out what are the needs of different, you know, parts of the market, market rate, affordable, replacement housing, so housing that becomes obsolete and needs to be replaced, housing preference, workforce housing needs, special populations such as seniors. So I think that it'll get there. In our conversation, we did talk a little bit about the Winston Proudie campus and how, you know, the idea of climate change refugees, and because their master plan for their campus looked at maybe being able to create some additional neighborhoods up on land that they own. So we talked about it. It's not explicit in this proposal, but we can go back and see if they have any ideas before we submit.
Doran, did you, did you have, was your hand up?
Yeah, I was just actually curious as part of that proposal. Yeah, I mean, I guess it really like looking at any type of like, if you want to try to buy a house here right now, under $300,000, good luck. Um, I mean, I was just like, my parents and I, that's, that's like my parents' favorite game in retire, in during COVID is like, looking at the houses. And it really is, is like, 300, 600,000 is pretty much most that you're going to find and up. So pretty, it is definitely pretty dire in terms of housing needs. And also, it's like, I think the actual rentals available is 0.5% in Wyndham County right now. I think it even might be down to like 0.3. And in my own
You know what you're getting?
Sorry.
Sorry, I was just asked, Doran, if you know, you know where you can get that stat. I've been hearing these numbers, and I want to make, when I'm writing these, the grant, I want to make sure them citing these sources.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure we got
Any idea where I can maybe find that data?
Yeah, I'll, I'll grab that from the tenants union. There's, it's on one of the state, one of the state websites.
Okay.
Vermont Law Help, honestly, on their website.
Okay.
Housing. But, but yeah, no, I have a, I have a ton of resources in that realm that I can shoot your way.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
But yeah, but even just like, in terms of, in my own personal experience, just like on Facebook, for every 10, 15 people I see looking, there's one there's one apartment and it's gone before it can be usually even like tossed around. So, um, yeah, I think it's definitely a very dire moment. Cause so many people are moving here and that's, you know, like, like for Brattleboro to continue to be, uh, a more diverse and better place, like we want people of diverse backgrounds to feel comfortable and safe moving here and have the infrastructure to support them. Um, and I don't know if we do currently. Um, I'd say we don't. Uh, and I think that's a lot of the conversation we have in the tenants' union. And part of why we brought the proposal that, that the tenants' union is bringing to the, to the select board, about just how, you know, we, we, we wanna call ourselves, like it's a good hearted community. We wanna call ourselves an equitable place and we really aren't. We're doing things like you all are doing really good work to try to make it equitable, you know? But I, we're not quite there. So I think anything in the words of like trying, like in the desire to make it, the, the community be a really equitable for all, like that kind of grant would be really useful.
I have a question, um, and I, I apologize in advance if this is out of order. But I remember back in the summer when we were doing all those webinar things and there was the fancy guy with the fancy graphics about how you figure out where your, well, where your really expensive land is and then capitalize on it. And he had this really interesting notion about the fact that the people who live further from the center should pay more.
Yep.
Because they should pay for the fact that the town has to plow their roads all the way out there when they could just as easily live in the center. But they, I, I mean, I think that that's such an important thing for this, I mean, and I'm one to talk, but, you know, my house was already existing. But, but it's such an important thing for this, for this region. Because if, if we get all of these climate refugees who have enough money to buy 20 or 30 acres and put up a big house on it and, and cut a lot of trees and destroy a lot of habitat for the animals. It, we're, we're very quickly not gonna be a very interesting place to live and for the animals at least. And then for the people less, less so. And, and it's, it seems to me, I, I guess, I guess every time we talk about housing, I just wanna keep on bringing that issue up. That whatever we can do to make, to incentivize people living within the town limits. Um, and I think there's, I mean, that was obviously you guys know, and that's why I really supported that zoning proposal. I mean, I really want denser built, um, buildings in, in our downtown area. Because I think we all really appreciate the natural landscape and, and the sort of unfettered sale of land for people to build here isn't serving anybody. And I don't know if this is the appropriate place to put it, but I, but it does seem to me that people with individual, you know, the, the capacity to, 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 to make a road someplace and then have the town take care of it, that ought to be curtailed. Doran, did you, I saw you put your hand up and then Jessica, then Tom.
Actually, along that lines, I don't know what, what can be done with the idea. Like I, to be perfectly honest, I will end up with probably with my partner building a tiny house on wheels. Cause that's really what I will most likely ever be able to afford and then maybe on land someday. But, um, the idea of tiny house communities, um, it's all the rage these days, uh, for good reason. Because usually you can build one cheaper than you can even get a mobile home. And obviously you get to, to design a tiny house that fits your, you know, the, you get to build something that's your own. And I think the idea of, uh, of tiny house communities is gonna be more and more. Which is actually, if we look back to the sixties and seventies, the heart of what the back to the land movement, which brought so many people to Vermont, which was a lot of, uh, communal style living, um, which is a way to live in community based, obviously harder in Corona, but very important in terms of like, uh, having safe, clean, good spaces for people to live. So I don't know if that's been also an idea, um, in the, somewhere in the scope to have, uh, tiny house, uh, communities. So putting infrastructure in towards obviously, uh, septic well, uh, to make them not, you know, to make sure that they're like good, healthy places to live. But that's another place, way that you can have a majority of people living within a smaller period of space without having to build a whole building. So just something else to keep in mind.
Jess.
Go ahead, Sue.
Yeah. Oh, I was gonna say, we weren't specific about tiny house, um, villages. But, you know, right now they regulatory, from a regulatory perspective, they can happen with the town regulations. We don't have too many barriers to that. I think one of the larger barriers is the state wastewater and, uh, water regulations. That seems to be one of the sticking points. Um, but yeah, we can certainly look at that.
I mean, if there was a way, sorry, like just in response, like to hook into a septic, a greater into the septic, uh, system to have an area wherever it could plug into, something of that sort.
Community system.
Go ahead, Jess.
I was just gonna sort of, um, go a little bit more into what Felicity was saying. Wondering if there can be something or if there were questions, if there are plans in the implementation piece, um, to address property tax and value assessments and valuations of properties. Like if that can be something that's built into the scope.
I, I definitely will reach back out to them to, to see about that. I mean, it wasn't in their list. They did say zoning and other regulations. So, you know, I think we talk to them and, and see what they have to say about it. But I think it's a good, it's a point well taken from both of you. Especially with people in the area.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've got, um, a little light bulb went off in my head when a, two or three of you were speaking. And, um, that's, it's maybe a little bit of indirect self-interest, but we're not voting on anything. So it should be okay to say. Right over there on the corner of Estabrook in South Maine is a really junky house. And it's been for sale for a long time. And, um, I bet that someone could get it for much less than it's being listed for, but I won't say anymore. And that'd be great. It could be torn down and made into a multi-unit or all sorts of things. So that's a great opportunity right in the, in the heart of downtown. And then the second point is, I wonder if Andrew, you could email what you read? Cause when people talk, I can understand and I mean, it, it, um, it processes, but when people read texts, like the intonation's different and everything. And I just like, my comprehension is difficult. So if you could email that, and I mean, just like, give it 24 hours for comments, maybe?
Yeah, sure. I think, um, I will, um, upload something to the Google Drive.
Okay, thank you.
And also the email where it's uploaded.
Great. Okay. So then, so then we're gonna agree to, to, to give everybody 24 hours to review that. If they wanna send comments back to Andrew. Is that, yes, Prudence?
I think that'd be great. I'm, I'm really interested in understanding, you know, what steps can be taken to, to affect where houses, where houses are built and so on. And you, so I'm, I'm, I'm gonna be interested to see the implement, you know, when we get to the implementation plan, what, what are the actions we can take? Because if people, yeah, people, um, I know there's things that can be done. Um, and I just, yeah, interested to learn more about those things. You know, somebody owns land outside town and wants to sell it. How, you know, what are our tools for encouraging not individual houses on, you know, one acre each type thing?
One concept that's really interesting that's kind of on that is called a transfer of development rights or TDR. And that's something that'd be cool if they could maybe address that in there. I'm not sure if a lot of you know what it is. But basically it's the opportunity to conserve land and like, let's just say somewhere in Brattleboro. And then transfer those funds to build in a more developed, friendly place like around downtown. Places that make TDR banks where it's like, kind of like a revolving loan fund in a way. It's more common in growing places like out in Washington to help preserve forests and ag land. But it's a certain concept similar to that.
That's cool.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Um, we should move on because we still have some substantive stuff to get to. So the next thing is planning commission norms discussion. So, um, I have my notes, um, but Andrew, I think you were taking notes on our conversation. Do you wanna, can you call those up?
And let me just get them out.
Well, we were the subcommittee that was draft, that was looking at drafting some, um, norms to add into, the bylaws about how we would conduct our business. And we ended up knocking some ideas around, but we don't, I, I think we had, we came up with sort of four common practices. Would that, was that be the right way to say it?
I thought it was three.
Or three.
Felicity, you came up with.
I came up with four.
I remember three.
Maybe one of them got thrown away. And, and then we had a, and then we had a discussion, a point of discussion. So, so Andrew, if you just wanna say what the three of them are and then, and then we can engage in the discussion.
Sure. Um, and Felicity, you may wanna expand because I know you had a little bit of a definition. I just want, what I got was norm one would be to trust each other. Norm two, respect everyone's time, use gestures when appropriate. Norm three, listen actively. I didn't see anything. I mean, I know you kind of went further into some of them, but, uh, that's the gist at least.
Yeah, I, I mean, I define them just, just so, um, that, so would be clear what they meant.
Yeah.
It seems to me, and taking a leaf from Ken's book, um, that it seems really important these, these days to actually for every time we talk about something significant that we define it. So people know what we mean. Because everybody has different definitions of, of, of different things. The other thing, the other one that I had on my list was be open and respectful. And that one seems particularly important to me in our polarized time. And by be open, I, is the, the, the notion that, that you sort of give people the benefit of the doubt. And I, and I think I'm thinking more about the national conversation rather than anything that we've had in the planning commission. Cause I think we are by and large respectful of each other. But in, in national discourse, it seems to me that people take offense super quickly. Um, and then the, the conversation is completely derailed. Because then it's, you're talking about trying to unoffend somebody instead of talking about the substance of the conversation. So that's all I meant by that. Um, and that, that I'm, I'm happy to read what I wrote for those things that people wanna hear. Yes, okay. So trust each other is assume the best. This is one, if you're offended by what someone has said, assume the offense was unintentional, point it out and move on. If you're offended, if you've offended someone, apologize and move on. The respect everyone's time, come prepared, don't ask, and this one, this is a sticking point. And, um, don't ask clarifying questions, the answers to which are available in having done the reading beforehand. Or informing yourself before the meeting began. And I think when I, when I wrote this out, I was really thinking about what we were trying to do to engage the public in the conversation. Um, and, and this is where I think it's a sticking point and worth having a conversation about. We want people to come and show up at the meetings and we don't necessarily say you have to take an hour to prepare yourself to come to the meeting. At the same time, for me, I think I've said this before in the meeting, that, that if you don't use your time effectively, you end up basically destabilizing the, the, the planning commission's job because we all only have a certain amount of time to meet and get things done. And when the meeting is over and we haven't gotten something done, it doesn't get done. Or, or it gets done by somebody else and the, and the community which we represent doesn't have a voice in whatever gets done. Because we are the community's representative to actually bring, um, our voice to the table with the powers that be. So I, I, I think this is one that is worth further conversation. Because again, we can't, we can't be explaining every time what we mean. And this is also true with the jargon conversation, you know, um, smart growth and those sorts of things that those of us who've been on the commission for a while know what we mean. But if we do wanna engage the public, then we have to define those terms when we utilize them. Because otherwise people are just gonna tune out because we're speaking gibberish as far as they're concerned. Yeah. And then listen actively and active listening is one of those, um, is, is one of these things in, in, you know, contemporary, well, non-contemporary, because it's not really part of current management discourse. The, the notion of actually really listening to what's being said. And I did a beautiful example of not active listening a couple of meetings ago when I repeated what Doran said. Because in the midst of him talking, I was thinking about what I was gonna say. So that's an, that's an effective example of not active listening. So that's all. Yeah, Jess.
There were a couple of more that I took notes on, um, that were like action things that we could do. Like providing the agenda in the meeting chat. So anyone not on the mailing list can be, can be up on what's next in the meeting.
Jess, do you mean on, like in the, in this meeting itself, like in a chat on this? So I was thinking about that and I'm like, why wouldn't they have the link? Cause you need to use the agenda to get to the link for this meeting.
This month, the Google Drive link was not on the agenda.
Was it not? Oh, that drive, that, that's what you're talking about. Okay, gotcha. Thanks. Talk about clarifying questions.
Right. So materials and.
Materials, yeah.
Could be accessible by all.
Yeah, you got it.
And then we did talk about the public comment section. Um, and how if no one had arrived for public comment by our agenda line, public comment section, we'd move that to the end of the meeting to make sure if anyone showed up late, they'd be able to participate and have their voice heard. I think that happened one time when we were still in person.
And my, my comment about that, which I think is a circular comment, but it, but it's really a concern about practice. That the public comments don't garner any immediate engagement. And this is what I, I mean, this is what I said in the meeting. So to a certain extent, we're just sort of replaying the meeting. But, but it feels important to me that if you're a member of the public, you come to a meeting, you make a public comment and everybody goes, aha. And then, and then nothing happens. You know, you may, you, you took the time to go and have a public comment, but, but, but it doesn't appear as if the commission paid any attention to what you said. And that to me, I feel like it, we, in order to keep people engaged, they have to see that there's an effect of their taking the time to visit our meeting. And I don't know how to bring that. I mean, it seems to me that the, our regulations are bylaws have been written, you know, by, by the state in the, and, and determined based upon a sort of, um, a, a legally binding notion of community engagement. But we, I, it, it's not, it needs to be, I don't know, it needs to be up to date. I, I think it's out, it's out of date.
I'm putting the list, um, in the chat.
Oh, great.
Doesn't have the full description of what, what each one is.
Thanks. Um, so, so the idea is to get these into our bylaws. How do people feel about that?
I think that, I mean, to me, these seem good. I, I kind of feel like, do we need a draft of them in the bylaws to kind of see how we, how they sit within it? And you know, we can kind of edit it directly. And I don't know if these need to be fleshed out. more, you know, just, just based on what Jess put in the chat, like active listening probably needs to be defined, or there needs to be clarification of like what we mean in the, in the actual bylaws for people.
It may also not, it, it, we could get around the notion of having to put it in the bylaws by simply saying the planning, adding a note in the bylaws that says that every planning commission annually reviews its, I don't want to use rules of engagement because that's a military metaphor, but, 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 but that sort of notion, the, the, the way in which we engage with each other and engage in the public and that, and, and so each year we would review these things and then reaffirm that these are the ones that we think are the most important and we are going to practice these. And then, you know, things could be added or taken off in time without us having to completely revote our bylaws every time.
Sue or Andrew, does this have to slide into the bylaws or can it be a separate policy that we adopt?
I could say it doesn't need to be in the bylaws, that it can be a separate policy that we can spiff up the Planning Commission's webpage on the town website and include it there. And it's kind of more you know, an operating procedure for our meetings to make it very boring and technical. But you know, if you want to put it in the bylaws, that's okay. I do just, can I just express my hesitation on kind of the definition of trust each other? So based on some work that I've been doing, the, you know, acknowledge the hurt and move on is a very white dominant, cultural dominant way of handling business. So I, I understand, you know, for the sake of respecting everybody's time, we don't want to bog down in something, but I think it's a little simplistic to just say we're just going to move on. So that's the one I think in the definition I'm a little uncomfortable, uncomfortable with.
What do you do? What, what's the, what's the way to, to, to say? I mean, I think it's not necessary. I mean, I think what, what I was trying to get at is this notion that somebody is intending to be harmful. And I think this is part of, this is part of the really, really, really complicated conversation that is coming next on our agenda. Based upon the work, the, the, the stuff that I sent out, and I, I mean, because I, I happen to have Kendi in my head right now. This sort of notion of exactly how do you get to be an anti-racist by a, active engagement in changing what's going on. But that, that especially, I mean, from my perspective, it seems really opaque to try to figure out exactly how, how, how I do that. I mean, I, I, and, and, and the notion that you can offend somebody without intending to offend somebody. I mean, I know I do that all the time. People tell me that I do it all the time. So I do know that I do it all the time. And I work actively to try not to do it all the time. But, but it is one of those things that once it happens, that's the end of the conversation. Because then it's about what, about the harm. And, and that seems to me that, you know, in, in the work of the commission, like I said, we've got a certain amount of time. And we have things that we really need to do. And because we misunderstand each other and because we're using language, we don't necessarily know what we mean, because I say racist, other people understand that term to be different from what, the way I use it. So there are going to be misunderstandings. And if every time there's a misunderstanding, there is, and maybe this is just what we need to do. But it seems to me that it, it's going to, if we do it that way, it's going to take a lot of time. And there's an enormous amount, I'm sensing an enormous amount of urgency on this project. To be able to really make change and make it be adamant in, in our, in our protestation that it needs to happen, it needs to happen now. It, that, I guess that's what I'm talking about. So if you haven't, I mean, is, if there's, is, is there another way to get around, I mean, if somebody's offended you and they purposefully meant to offend you, which gosh, happens all the time these days. Then I think you can totally stop and hash it out. You know, and it's about that. But if it's just, the thing you said really offended me, I didn't mean to offend you, I, this is what I was trying to say. Oh, oh, okay. Well, I misunderstood you. I thought you meant that. That, that's more what I was talking about. But I, but I acknowledged that, yeah, of course.
Well, and I think for me, it was just the, like apologize and, and move on part, because the series I've been watching is kind of, you know, we need to learn to re-apologize. It's not about me feeling better, it's about recognizing, you know, so I just think the concept of just apologize and move on. But I definitely hear what you're saying and I'm not exactly sure how we get there. But it's, maybe it's just being aware.
Other thoughts? I'm going to mute. My cat's eating, making loud jumping noises.
I, um, I was reading them over. I thought maybe the very last one was a little hard to read or hard to understand, could be because I don't get enough sleep. Number eight. I agree, and I, for what it's worth, I agree with Sue questioning the first one. I'm just not sure how to make it better. But I agree with the, her question. Number eight, the, the way I read number eight is maybe what the intention is, is trying to define how public can be engaged and how we will respond to their engagement. So the idea of not, you know, you don't just come, you say something and then nothing happens, but how, how do we respond? I don't know if that's just as simple as saying, you know, when someone comes and participates, you know, we make clear next steps for how that, what comes out of that. I think that's the intention in number eight, but I may not be understanding it right.
Yeah, I think it had two parts. And the first part was sort of clarifying how public could be engaged in specific agenda topics that are already in process, like if we've been working on them for a few weeks, or there needs to be some expertise or knowledge sort of involved in the discussion and decision-making, that there would be very specific opportunities for clarifying questions and to discuss once a motion had been made. Specifically, rather than opening up for a general, a general comment on each agenda item. And then I think the second part was also, I think you, you said it more succinctly, is just when someone comes, they can ask for action, or if they don't have the expertise to ask for a specific action, the planning commission or staff needs to follow up with an action.
Yeah, that, that makes sense. Thank you. That's helpful. I think that's good.
This seems like this part, I think, should be in the bylaws. Or somehow, because it's important, I mean, to me, it's important enough that it is compulsory for every commission. Should be compulsory for every commission. But the, the, the others, I think, are really about how, how people interact. And, and obviously, the planning commission by its nature has to be a collaborative organization. So, I mean, these are techniques to be collaborative. And the other equally functional techniques can be used to collaborate. But this one is really about making sure that the public is brought in and has a role to play that's respected and, and real. Yeah, Prudence.
It does make sense to have that public participation be ironed out and put in the bylaws, I think. And, and there wouldn't always be an action, you know, that results from public participation, but, but it's, yeah, it's so that there's not a sense of you come and just, you know, share, share your views and then they go into the ethernet and never hear back.
So how do we want to proceed? Oh, yeah, Kathy, go ahead.
I was just reflecting on number one, and I think, you know, I think one of the things it assumes, which is, which we're not actually stating, is that we, hello, Callie. We were choosing to, how do I put this? Like, we all serve as commissioners in a particular role, and you could come into this role and not acknowledge each other's humanity. Right? And just, and just address and deal with the business at hand. I think what number one is saying, even before the trust each other, is that we are choosing as a body to, like first and foremost, acknowledge and respect each other's humanity. And that means being kind of emotionally and psychologically present with each other in a way that would, will cause us to be considerate of how we affect each other. And yeah, it doesn't help to clear, to figure out a way to clearly state that. But to me, it's sort of like, that's what it seems to be getting at, is that we're, we're actually clearly stating that we are not being a bureaucratic board, that we are showing up in our full human present selves and trying to be respectful of each other in that capacity.
I like that wording. Doran?
I was just gonna, yeah, you said something about instead of trusting each other, trusting that everyone's acting in our communities, in like mainly in our community's best interests. So something along that line of wording, because it's just that, that we're all by actively participating in the board, we are saying that we want, we are, we like, we care about each other's humanity and, and are participating in, in our community's best interest.
Yeah, but, and also as individuals, you know, respectful of each other as individuals, our humanity. Yeah.
Yeah, I think that, that also goes, so, um, acknowledges that calling someone out or calling someone in on causing offense or hurt, that that's done in goodwill. With the hope of growth and change and, and learning, rather than just the accusation and, and whatever doxing might come out of it.
And also recognizing that we are going to make mistakes. I mean, that's the whole process of learning these things, especially as being majority, everyone here is white, identifies as white, we're going to be making those mistakes as we learn. It's part of embracing that comfort, the uncomfortableness. And that's human on our end. So I think that's also important that I hope, and I believe that we are all trying to actively learn to be anti-racist, like Felicity brought up before. It's an everyday thing. It's something you, you gotta continue to do it, you know, you can't stop.
Kathy, can you make a stab at writing up what you said? Because it was so eloquent and I liked it. I thought you, and you said it best, you said it best.
Sure.
Great. So can we, can we, can we close this down so we can open up the next conversation? Because I, I, I know that Kate is going to have to go, and I want to make sure we can all be here, at least, and engaged in this next conversation for, for, for a chunk of time. So perhaps the thing to do is sort of frame this up into language and then, and then we can circulate it before the next meeting and everybody can read it. And then in the next meeting, we can sort of have a, okay, we get it. And, and vote, vote it in and move on. Is that good?
Are we putting the full thing into our bylaws?
Well, what do y'all think?
It, it does seem like the last one is, is maybe qualitatively different, number eight, the one on public engagement. I think from the others, if we, I think, I can't remember who, but someone suggested maybe splitting that one and putting that one in with the bylaws and the others being like norms that just get re-adopted each year. That might make sense.
Everybody okay going that way? We can revisit that next time if, if we change our minds. Okay, cool. Can you, can you write those up? Do you have a question, Tom? Are you agreeing?
Yeah. Oh, I'm agreeing, but also a comment that I think it's pretty common for organizations to have, well, they mandated to have bylaws, right? But then rules of procedure document is often separate. And I feel like this fits better with that because these aren't like legal mandates. I mean, we should follow them if, if we all agree with them. And maybe our ethical guilt will be greater punishment than any, you know, court could ever serve. But I think maybe two documents might, might best, might, you know, be appropriate in this case. Rules of procedure might be the title for this. I don't know.
Okay. Great. All right. So the next conversation is social justice practices. And it's been such a long time since we said that we were going to do that, this. I went back and reviewed the materials that I sent out to you guys, but I, but I, but I would love for us as a group, rather than me as an individual, to sort of call to mind what it is that we feel we need to do in this time and obviously going forward. I mean, I think our attempt here is to, is to change the practice that planning, this particular planning commission and planning commissions and planners have been doing in the United States since at least the 19th century, early 20th century, when, when the American Planning Association was established, which I have a really cool article on, if anybody wants to read, it's very interesting. But, but so I, I've opened the floor to conversations. Anybody wants to get started? Please, go right ahead. Dive in. Yes, Prudence.
Well, I really appreciated both, you know, both resources. And Kendi's was, the interview was just, it was so succinct. There was, it was, there was a lot to think about, but it was, it was really succinct. And I guess we want to affirm that, you know, I think maybe we shouldn't assume, but we want to affirm that we all want to be anti-racist and we, we want to work on that. And I thought he made a good point of, he said that being a racist is not a fixed identity or category. It's, it's what you are in the moment, what you're doing in the moment. And you can be both racist and anti-racist depending on, you know, the issue or the moment or, or what's happening. So, so I thought that was pretty helpful. So I guess, yeah, I mean, if part of the, do you think we might have a statement come out of this discussion that talks about what the planning commission, how we want to conduct our work in light of racial justice?
Well, I think you just actually made a suggestion that, 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 that we've been, we, we adopted a set of values. And for the most part, every, every time we've been having a conversation about, well, we're going to make a decision, we're going to vote, we've set it against the values. If we add to that, that we aspire to be anti-racist, then if the measurement, we add that to our measure, and we say, is this policy that we're about to put in place, is this practice that we're about to put in place, is it anti-racist? And anti-racist is actively taking apart racist policies and aiming towards equity. That would be a measure that we would have to then set up everything we did against. that would be a measure that we would have to then set up everything we did against. Yeah, Doran?
I've been listening to How to Be an Anti-Racist by Ibrahim X. Kendi is incredible, well worth either reading or listening to an audiobook in terms of directly about what you all are talking about, and it just, just so, it explains a lot, kind of what Andrew was talking about, how to, how to tackle racism as white people, how to kind of daily see how, what we can do to, to, to not have leaned into any racist tendencies. So just a suggestion towards helping learn about that. I've just been learning so much about it.
Kathy, did you want to say something?
No, I, no, I was trying to think of where, you know, there's the, I agree with you about the values. No, and I'm gonna say something anyway, right? I agree, you know, I was trying to think of like, where, where does our thought process, and if there's a product, whatever the product is, sit with in this regard, and so does it, is there's, there's nothing in the norms addressing it, but then also there's the values, and so, you know, to me, it makes sense that, that we put that as a value that we then use as a way of checking our work to a certain extent, but I was also wondering, is, should there be something in the norms to address it?
Thoughts?
I have a thought.
Great.
I, I love the idea of, of putting it into the norms. I also had a really interesting conversation with someone today about, you know, if you make your efforts towards anti-racism explicit, putting it in values documents or policies or procedure, what is that? What does that mean or add or do? Can you do it without trumpeting it? Will it be effective if you don't trumpet it? I like, I'm, so I'm sort of like wrestling with some of these questions, like, what would the point be of making it explicit? Would that make the planning commission a more welcoming place for more diverse participants if it was explicit? Or would it be adding noise to a conversation that's not necessarily about, about us right now?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think one of the, one of, one of the stumbling blocks to this whole thing is what exactly it is, I mean, particularly in, what, what exactly we're capable of doing, and what we don't want to do is make empty gestures. And because, because that's sort of, that's, you know, that's worse than, worse than nothing, I think, to some, some people, it's worse, worse than nothing. So, so that's, I mean, I think I have been longing for a lo, for, for a while to have these difficult conversations, because I think as soon as we get to this point where we're actually having the difficult conversations, then we can actually go somewhere. I mean, what I've seen is a lot of resistance to having the difficult conversations, and so we're still stuck with a lot of goodwill and not a lot of good action. So I don't, I mean, I don't know, I think it's a point really well taken, and I think that's part of, but it's part of the, the, the problem. It just makes me think that, I mean, listening to Kendi, you've got this notion that there is a concrete something that can be done, but when I actually look at what we're doing, I think, what is the concrete something that we can do? And, and I, and I, I, I don't know. In, I'm thinking about the, what, what we've got in front of us, and I just don't know what it is.
If I may, I think adding something to the norms would be a good first step. I don't think we have to stop there. I think having it in the norms can accomplish a few things. One, it can be something we can point to if people are feeling like they're not sure if it's gonna be welcoming, if there's something there that you can say, here it is, it's posted. I think that's good. I think it's, two, it's also something we can look back to when we're trying to evaluate if something is meeting our norms, something that's up for consideration or discussion. And three, I think that in the event, you know, if we ever got like Zoom bombed or something, you know, really awful, again, we can point to it and say, this is not meeting with our norms, because it is there and it is documented. So I do think, I'm in favor of documenting it. I'm not a good wordsmith, so don't ask me to wordsmith it, but documenting it and having it in our norms is a good first step, and then I, I think, you know, growing from there is good, too.
Other comments? Sorry, I'm totally in the dark here. I'm trying, but it's the lighting in the room.
I had another question. Felicity, you mentioned having some sort of anti-racist value in, on our list of values and measuring what work we're doing against that. I guess the question I would have would be, what is, like, are there concrete measures or definitions that we can use and apply to that value? Or how would we build those so that we really fully understand what it means when we say we're gonna give this a five stars on the anti-racist scale?
Right. Well, if you look at the, oh, sorry, go ahead, Doran.
I was just gonna say, it, having language around the term anti-white supremacy is really powerful, and that's even something that's, that even you like, that, the, the select, the select board can get, gets a little nervous about even talking about that term. But having that be terminology that's adopted into the planning commission, and then, you know, having it be an example for other committees and/or organizations that are looking, look at bylaws of town entities to see that anti-white supremacy is part of, you know, part of the, the wording, is that, that does, that is something relatively powerful. It's amazing how much those small steps across a platform to all aspects, you know, as like a slow ripple through all aspects of town governance can quickly make a big, big example of what the town is working towards. So it just, having some terminology around that is really powerful. It does, it makes a beautiful statement of what you're aiming for.
What, what is, what can you define what an anti-white supremacist is?
Is against, against institutions and/or remaining establishments that continue to prop up a society that puts one people based on the color of their skin above other people. This, that's, I guess that's what I could come up with on the moment.
Yeah, yeah, and centralizes and like focuses the normal on
White.
able-bodied. It's well off societ economically male often. Just de-centering that item is the anti-white supremacy.
Comments?
I think, Doran, the way you described it, I think, is easier for me to emotionally process than the word, than saying anti-white supremacist. Anything with white supremacist, I can't even say, in it makes me feel almost immediately violent, you know, like really agitated, and so I think, I think maybe avoiding the term. I, I may, I may have a similar feeling about Trump, right, like, I feel like you can energize things by speaking about it. So, you know, putting the anti in front of it is almost not strong enough to nullify it, right? So I feel like the description of the value, right, or the work might go a long way toward allowing dialogue, whereas saying anti-white supremacist may not, because it, it, it's a polarizing word to me in a certain way, or defensive words, or, you know, I can't quite put my, no, I don't think I'm articulating it correctly, but well, but.
Andrew, you had your hand up, but Doran, do you want to respond directly?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, yeah, I think it is a very powerful term. I also think it's a, it's kind of the right time to start using it, and especially around that. I think it's very easy to then break down into discussion if someone is, is as strong gut against that, that terminology. You can have a really good conversation, you can then break down the words. I don't know, having a term like that makes a statement about that we are, live in all forms, working towards a society that is not that. I think the only people that would really get super set off by that are people that disagree with that term, and then that's a whole other can of worms. But, I don't know, that, it, it's a very powerful term, I think, on purpose, because it does say that as an entity, you're working towards that not being the way our society works anymore, because that's the way it has.
Andrew?
So one thing also to remember is that a lot of the planning profession was built on white supremacy. And someone who's coming into this field relatively new, I want to work to break those, the systems that, that have been created out of the traditional planning practices that were majorly created by white males. And for me, it's how do we incorporate other ways of planning and that have been left out or marginalized, such as indigenous ways of knowing the land, understanding black principles from, understanding black urbanists' view on planning, what does a black space mean compared to a white space, understanding can white people even create those spaces? Having those kind of conversations, understanding where we, our role is now today, and how we dismantle those policies that have been set up over time to create where we are today. And I think, Felicity, that's kind of what does that article you sent to us, was mentioning that there's these policies that have been building over in time, they've been dividing us on either end, not addressing those root issues, and here we are today. So for me, it's like, how can planning start to address those root issues? And I think there's a way we can do it locally. I mean, obviously, nationally, we need to do something about it. But I mean, how do we, as people living in Brattleboro, address the issues that are facing bradliness? Some are linked to the national level, some are regional, but I think some are also local. And I think we can do real good things locally, but again, recognizing that planning, the way it was set up was really around white supremacy. So kind of that's my spiel in the intersection, because it really is linked.
Yeah.
So, um, I wanted to just point out that kind of the social justice issues in, in Brattleboro are layered, and it's not just, I think it's more than just being anti-racist, and one thing that stuck out in this North Hampton Fair Housing Plan, which I think Felicity's sister may have worked on, is they were, they, they gave different definitions for, for aspects of equity, and it was a housing plan, so it is dealing with discrimination. But I think in our work that we have to keep in mind these kind of four different areas, and I can place them in the chat afterwards, but it's distributional equity, who benefits and who loses from public goods, structural equity, how to overcome historical racism and institutional racism that has created a path that is very hard to change, trans or intergenerational equity, how do decisions we make today affect opportunities for future generations? And for procedural equity, how do we include members of affected populations, not only in outcomes, but in representation at the table in decision-making? So I guess I just bring these up because, you know, Andrew's right, planning is a structure, planning has created this structure. It's one of the many, you know, policy structures. But I think for, for Brattleboro, it's not just black and white, that's part of it. I don't think that we have a good grasp on, you know, what zoning and housing policy and stuff has, what that effect in Brattleboro has been. It's very clear in the urban areas. I just don't have a good grasp on that for Brattleboro. But there are other equity issues just beyond being, I guess, anti-racist. That just want to point out.
Um, I'm gonna take off my, 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 my chair hat. The thing that I, I wanted to add is essentially what, a piece of what you said, Sue, which is, my understanding of the development of planning was this, is ultimately that it, the driver of planning was capitalism. That it was to capitalize on the value of the land and to make sure that the value of the land was amassed by only a subset of the population. And when planning started, that there was a cohort that ultimately didn't win the conversation, that in fact wanted to create planning for equity. That the entire discipline could have gone the other way. It could have gone towards clearing the slums in New York City, which is, which is, according to this article that I read, where it started in the, in the beginning of the 20th century, that, if all of you, if you remember the, you know, the photographs of Lewis Hine, the, the slums and the people packed into them, that there were social justice workers who were, who said, this is a problem, and we can, we can zone this out of existence. We can make it illegal for people to live like this, and then there will be better housing. There will be, there will be incentives to, to create better housing, to create more affordable housing, and that could have been what planning is. The problem, of course, is that, is that capitalism, I mean, we live in a capitalist society. Our entire economy is focused around the notion of, of capitalization of land and property. So there's, there, there's a lot, there, I think, I think you're right, Andrew, there's a lot that we can do. There's also a lot that we, we, I mean, there's, there's an enormous mountain to climb, which is to take apart capitalism. Not that I think it can't be done, but.
No, I, you're right, and that's what I was saying, some of these things that are bigger than Brattleboro are gonna be tough to address, but I think, you know, we can actively, as a commission, try to create policies, at least around, in our, in our control as much as we can, that are trying to address those things and trying to keep building, perpetuating those policies that have been in place. Does that make sense? Instead of going in that one direction or another direction, like those planners that, you know, you know, you could have gone that one road, and they didn't. Those are just my thoughts, that, you know, actively as a commission, trying to make a difference ourselves, instead of trying to perpetuate the status quo.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I, I guess to go back to the, the, this notion of whether we want to be anti-white supremacist or anti-racist, I think this notion of, the thing that I like about Kendi's definition of anti-racism is that it, it has, it has a procedural component, that if you are an anti-racist, then A, you don't subscribe to racist policies, and B, you subscribe to anti-racist policies, and those anti-racist policies are anti-racist because they work towards making a more equitable society. So that, that, if you, if you agree to that, it gives you an actual trajectory, and you get to the end, and you say, okay, so it's a policy that we're voting on, does it actively make our community more equitable? And that seems to me like it, it's measurable. We can, we could, we should be able to see whether or not we can do that. Oh, it's 7:32. Kate, how are you doing?
I've been given a few minute reprieve, because the kids are going to bed nicely. I was gonna make a suggestion, I, I like the, I don't know how others feel, but I kind of like the North Hampton suggestion as a starting place. As I said, I'm not a good wordsmith, but I wondered if, if others liked it as well, and if we But I wondered if, if others liked it as well and if we wanted to kind of start, if we can just steal that and start with that as a starting place, then somebody who's very good at wording these things wants to take a shot at it, then maybe we could review it and think about how to incorporate it. Because I think we're probably not going to get to a point in this meeting where we're ready to like adopt something, you know, outright. But maybe having a place to start from and then, you know, adapting the language to be stronger if we want or, you know, in that direction, that might be a good next step.
Great.
What do you guys think?
I really like what those four points that Sue put in the chat. And I think that, you know, they can even help us shape, if not, you know, the work that we're currently doing. Though I see like the housing plan and the finishing, the downtown plan and the parks, parks and public spaces piece. And maybe another project that was in the town master plan was to do a more thorough park and recs plan. Those would all go to point one. Point two looks intensely difficult to tackle. But I wonder if, you know, that can be an ongoing conversation that we invite folks in. Number three looks like a values point. Number four, I feel like we are, we have started to do some of that work with our norms and our values. So like, I love this list. This, this really feels like we could take action and incorporate this. Absolutely.
I agree.
So do we want to, do we want to sort of think on these? And come back to them and decide if we need to even, I mean, they, they look nicely worded to me. Is it absolutely necessary for us to change the language or can we adopt somebody else's language and we would obviously cite them? But.
It happens in planning all the time.
Okay. Anybody else? Comments?
One thing I'd say is I feel like there's some assumed knowledge in the language here, like path dependence. I don't know what that means. That's me, that's, I guess, the main one. Everything else seems clear, but it, maybe we just need some clarity around, around that.
Yeah, you're, okay, great.
We talked about putting our norms into something like a procedural, like meeting procedures document or something like that, that would get approved every year. I wonder if these would fit into that or if they need to be a separate thing on their own.
I was also thinking about our values, the values, like, like I just went to try to find them and I couldn't find them. So they're not actually codified anywhere, anywhere. And it might be nice to just have all this together that we at least, you know, it's harder on Zoom, but ideally in face-to-face meetings, we would have them in the room and be able to reflect on them as we're considering things. And certainly annually, right, as we kind of review our bylaws or whatever, elect the new chair, we sort of have some time to reflect on this and, and see if they need to be, you know, clarified, updated or whatever. And just, I'm not jumbling. Callie is jumbling, so. So you know. The little monkey, little monkey next to me is.
Uh-oh. Tom, what are you doing? Are you showing us our values? There they are. They're not coming up though, Tom. They're right down there. They're very small. Can you bring them up to the center?
I think you need to switch which window you're sharing.
I think I need to get out of this. I didn't.
You probably don't want us to see all that stuff there, Tom.
Do you want me to, let me see if I can help you out.
What's in that folder? I hope nothing bad. Nothing revealing. Well, I paused the screen sharing, right?
Just your bank statement, that's all.
Oh, yeah.
I'm trying to get you off, okay. Did you do it or did I do it?
Oh, I paused it. That was like 10, 10, 15 seconds ago, though.
Looks like, it looks like we lost Kate in the intro.
I didn't do that.
I don't think I did. I was trying to stop your screen sharing. I didn't know that. I thought I had a Zoom bomber in the meeting.
When it gives the share screen option, it's just, oh, you disabled it now. Okay. Anyway, yeah, it's a thought.
I'll bring it back up for you to share. It's okay.
Well.
Well, no, but it's a good, it's a good point. The, the value should be on our, should be at least in the, in the, in the Google Drive and easily accessible. I had a piece of paper that had them. I printed up what Tom sent out. And, and, and now it's not in my little planning commission notebook. I don't know where it is. But I, you know, I think we're, I think we're running, we're running down at this point. So I guess I'm wondering how, what's the next step? How do we move forward? I mean, we have, we have procedures, we have norms, we have values. Some of this stuff, I mean, is, it's important for us in order to do the work that we're all committed to doing. Some of it's important because we want to be, have our outward face inclusive. And some of it's important because we need to, we need some direction in what we're doing. So it seems to me that those are, those are separate categories. Some of them will come together, but they're, but the outward facing thing, we don't want to have it be too wordy. And we want it to be clear. And the in, the, the structural stuff, we want it to be detailed enough so that, so that when we're no longer in the planning commission, that our successors will be doing this good work. We don't want to leave some sort of document that is, that is interpretable enough for them to return to a kind of zoning practice that we're, that we're all opposed to. So, so there. I've said what I was gonna say. And I don't have anything left to say.
Sue or Andrew, do you guys have recommendations on how we might set this up as a guiding document or as guiding set of things?
I need to think about it a little bit. I mean, I guess the one thing I would say, I mean, I, I don't disagree with you, Felicity, that we want it to set up so that predecessors will carry on the good work, but that I don't think we can guarantee that, especially because the select board appoints. So I think a good thing to do would be to figure out the best way to document this, share it with the select board. So that when they are making appointments, hopefully, you know, it is, so that it is documented that this, this is what we want out of the planning commission and hope that we have commissioners that are working in not good faith. I think I need to think about the best way to do that, but we can do that before the October meeting. I don't know if Andrew, if you have any thoughts off the top of your head, I might want to, you know, the bylaws, you know, are looked at every year, but you know, it is kind of the, well, there's going to be a chair, vice chair clerk, that kind of thing. So. I think it might be kind of an operating procedure type, might be a better place for it. And then again, you know, being a little bit more outward with it, updating the website or at least the planning commission's webpage with more information about this and.
Yeah, I, I agree with you, Sue. More operational aspect and making sure that folks who are, let's just say in the future, thinking about being on the commission can see what the work we've done and the values that we've created and how we, you all see the commission. So that's kind of right out there. It's not hidden in any way. So just to make sure that our work is expressed and then our values are openly out there.
Okay, so who's gonna work on wordsmithing the city of Northampton stuff? Prudence, thank you. I mean, people like the wording pretty well, so it seems like an easy job, just a little explanation of that one, one thing. But somehow I think we need to have our values and then these is how we, this is how we action, make our values have action. Are these four points? That's kind of what I'm thinking. I don't know if the rest of you are, but. But we need to put it in one document. Yeah, I was thinking that too, Prudence. I think that, yeah, these are, these are the way we, yeah, the, the way we achieve what we want to achieve. I do like the notion of being able to test the, the, every, everything. So I suppose if we use these as the sort of rubric to test, distributional equity, structural equity, trans or intergenerational procedural equity. I mean, it would be that, it would, it would be useful if maybe another thing that we could do at this point is start to benchmark our data. So that if we have data about our population and where they live and what their needs are, so that as we go forward, like, like with this new interim zoning policy, it would be really good in two years to reexamine to see whether or not that zoning change created more affordable housing. And, and we need, we need some benchmark data in order to get started pulling that data. Yeah, Jess.
I know the Housing Trust does a major study every year or every two years on housing stock in the community. I don't know if they'd be willing to share it, but the work is already being done and the, the data is already being collected.
Great. Sue, can we?
Yeah, yeah, I can. I'm not sure exactly which report you're referring to or if I've even ever seen it. But yeah, we can definitely look at that. And, and the housing needs analysis, if we're successful, is going to give us some of that, I mean, as well. So, but I will check in with the Housing Trust.
Okay, so Prudence, you've got your work cut out for us. The rest of us, we're gonna look at Andrew's thing that he just sent around or that Sue put up on the Google Drive and respond to either Sue or Andrew within 24 hours on comments on that. And we'll revisit both the norms and the procedures in October. Good? Anything else? Sarah, motion to adjourn?
I moved that we adjourn.
Second? Is there a second? Yes, there are two seconds. All those in favor of adjourning?
Aye.
Good. We stand adjourned. Thank you all. Stay safe.
Thanks, everyone.
Good evening.
Take care.
Have a good day, Felicity.
Yeah.
Everybody.
Yes.
You're teaching.
Take care.